All right, thank you all for being here tonight. I hate to take the fun out of the reunion that's going on in the back of the room, but we're gonna go ahead and move this forward. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. And today is Tuesday, the 12th of March, 2019. Before we dive into roll call, I was remiss at the last meeting, but nobody caught it except me, unfortunately, to introduce council and staff. I am the mayor this year, John Deloso. We have our vice mayor to my left, Wendy Skillman, and council members Mark Landman, John Moore, and Susan Harvey. We also have an excellent staff lined up for you this evening, and even more that we're gonna hear from shortly, but we have our city manager, Damian Obid, our city attorney, Robin Donahue, our chief, Michael Parrish, our city engineer and director of Public Works, Craig Scott, our administrative services director, Angela Porter, and a player to be named later, and our city clerk, Lauren Burgess. All right, now if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Deloso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skillman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
All right, at this point in time, I'd like Officer Mitchell to approach the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If I can get everyone to stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. And not to throw his colleagues under the bus, but when I did go and ask all four of them in the front row, who would like to lead the pledge, they all quickly turned to the youngest member of the staff. So, we know how that goes, yep. So typical. All right, item four in our agenda is approval of minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
I'll move to approve. Second?
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
And I will abstain, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, one abstention, so it's a 401 vote with one abstention from Councilmember Landman. All right, item five is our announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of the Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Roner Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, you can call the library at (584) 9121, or visit them on the web at sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, you can call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code, which is (94931), to (888) 777. And finally, the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. We're now at one of our favorite moments, and that is our honorary mayor, and I did not get a chance to go look for our honorary mayor, Lydia Arguello. Are you here? You are here, please come up to the podium. As you're walking, I'll let you know, this is an opportunity for us to really drill down deep and ask you some really, really tough questions. All kidding aside, you're looking a little nervous, don't be nervous, we're all relatively regular humans up here. So, we'd love to hear about you and what's going on at your school.
Well, as you guys already heard, my name is Lydia Arguello. I do go to Thomas Page Academy, and we do a lot of fun activities.
Come a little closer to the microphone, I think.
Is this okay?
Perfect.
I've been going to Thomas Page Academy since I was five, and I'm now in eighth grade. It's a really good school. The people are very genuine and nice, and we do lots of fun activities. I don't know what else to say.
That's okay. I was gonna jump in to save you there, but you did fine. Yeah, I think what we'll do is, what we usually do is we go up and down the dais here, and maybe there's some questions you might be able to answer about some questions that council has. So why don't we start with Councilmember Moore?
Well Lydia, thanks for coming, and don't mind the mayor, he's a little tough. What grade are you in over there at Thomas Page?
What?
What grade are you in there at Thomas Page?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade, and do you participate in any extracurricular activities over there?
I do not.
Okay. And did you have an interest in city government that prompted you to come on up?
I have sort of an interest in city government. I think it's very interesting to know. I think it's very interesting to look into, and I think it's really important.
So basically, kind of an introduction in trying to get an understanding of what we do here.
Yeah.
Well, welcome, and you're doing fine.
Thank you.
Take a breath. Councilmember Harvey?
Welcome, thank you Lydia. So, I know you're still only in eighth grade, but do you have any future aspirations?
I do.
You do, could you share them with us?
I really do wanna be a detective when I get older. It seems like such an interesting job to be able to solve cases that nobody is really sure about, and being able to figure out something that's really important to society or just anything in general.
That's great. Well, we welcome you here, we're glad you're here, it's okay. I think the mayor has some work for you, but I'll leave it at that, and thank you for coming.
See, they're putting the pressure on me, not on you, so...
That's your job.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman?
I only have five or 10 calculus problems, they're not too difficult for you, so you should probably be fine. We'll start the timer now. Actually, no. First of all, I just wanted you to know, you got more smiles than I've seen in a long time from our officers when you mentioned the detective part. Although I thought there was some worry about competition maybe, nevertheless, it was very supportive, so that's good, Lydia. So I just wanted to ask you, in eighth grade in Thomas Page, you mentioned you have a lot of fun activities, what are some of the fun ones? Share a few with us that you particularly like, and why you like them.
Some of the fun activities? There's this one hour in eighth grade called Genius Hour, where my science and math teacher does a period at the end of school, where we just go into a room and we express how we feel or what we really like into art. That's something that I really enjoy doing at Thomas Page. Another thing is all the field trips. This year so far, they're astounding, they're so fun, and they're such a great learning experience for everyone that goes on them.
A particular favorite field trip? Or all-too-good kinda to pick a favorite?
We are actually going to go for a hike in a few weeks, I think like two weeks from now, and then we're gonna go spend an evening at the beach and just have a barbecue.
That sounds like a great field trip. Well, thank you for sharing that Genius Hour, sounds wonderful, glad to hear Thomas Page is doing so well.
Vice Mayor Skillman?
Hey Lydia.
Hi.
So, I know it's a little intimidating to be in front of all these people, but you're really doing a fine job, so don't stress. We've all been there, we've all been just as nervous in front of a crowd, so believe me, it took a while to get used to being up here, and being on camera, it's crazy. So... Uh-oh, uh-oh. I just made the stress level worse, I'm so sorry. Don't worry, it's all good, don't worry, the camera's on us, it's okay. So anyway, do you know where you're planning on going to high school, or are you gonna go to...
I do.
Where would you like to go?
I'm going to Credo High School.
Very good, very good.
It's a very good learning school, it's a college prep school, and 90% of their students, I'm pretty sure, get sent to Sonoma State University after being prepared for going to college, or they can apply for their own, whatever they feel like. And it's a very environmental, one-planet-based school, so we don't use a lot of resources there, from what I can tell, since I've already shadowed there. There are a lot of students who support each other, there's no one who puts down another student, from what I've observed, for being there for a whole day, it was incredible.
That's great, so you got to actually spend the day there and just kinda get a good feel for it, that's great, 'cause it's hard sometimes to like see what a campus, you can read about it, but actually going and seeing how the students interact with each other, that's great, so I'm glad you got that opportunity, so... Well, very good, it sounds like you really like to kinda research and check things out, so that's great that you were able to do that, so... Wish you continued good luck, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. This guy's gonna try to get you to come back with some information from your classmates, but it's really just sort of telling us how we're doing and how we can improve. So you get to grade us for a change. All right, thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah.
So that's great, you stole my thunder, thanks. That was easy. Yeah, the detective part, that's very interesting. I want you to do just one little thing, in a second, I'm gonna ask you just to turn around and just look, and everybody who's affiliated with the Kattati Police Department is gonna wave to you. Watch this, turn around. So, there's a lot of support out there for becoming a detective down the road, which is great, good for you. Sounds like you already have some goals lined up for high school, that's great. And, you know, these folks up here, they're kind of friendly towards me, but they do always put this little bit of pressure about, I like to give homework assignments out. You're in school, it's just, it's normal, right? Homework assignments. So, when you come back in two weeks, we hope, you will, right? You're coming back in two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, good, all right, just checking. I didn't, yeah, I didn't know if, and never mind, I'm not gonna go there. So when you come back, talk to your friends, either neighborhood, at school, there's, we can't always act on something super quick. The wheels of government do turn a little slow sometimes for many people, but you know, what kinds of services or activities would you like to see your age group, would you like to see in the city that maybe we currently aren't providing, or that you have to go to Petaluma, Roner Park, Santa Rosa to get those services, whatever they may be? So just talk to your friends, and when you come back, you know, we'll just ask you to kinda report out and what kind of feedback you got, so... And do you have anyone here tonight you came with that you'd like to introduce?
That's my mom.
Hi Mom.
Hi!
Excellent. All right, Lydia did a great job, I know it's a school night, you are welcome to stay here as long as you can and want to, and thank you for being here, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is item seven, which is a proclamation for recognizing National Surveyors Week. Ah, yes, we have someone in the house. I have a funny feeling you might be Dan.
I am.
Ah, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Dan Langley, I'm the president of the Sonoma County Chapter of the California Land Surveyors Association.
Sounds incredibly technical.
At times.
I'm not gonna give you any homework assignments, 'cause I'd be a little...
I have plenty of work, thank you.
I bet you do, I bet you do. So I'd like to read this proclamation and then present this to you. Whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and it is a requirement in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction, with its most familiar modern use in the fields of transport, or transportation potentially, building and construction, communications, mapping, and the definition of legal boundaries for land ownership, and whereas in order to accomplish their objectives, surveyors use elements of engineering, physics, mathematics, astronomy, law, and history, and whereas since the colonial days of the United States, surveyors have been leaders in the community, statesmen, influential citizens, and shapers of cultural standards. There's a lot to live up to in this, we're not done yet.
There really is.
All right. Former notable surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Lewis and Clark, Daniel Boone, and Henry David Thoreau, among many others. And whereas many services are now provided through the use of sophisticated surveying equipment and techniques, including satellite-born remote sensing devices, and automated positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting equipment, and whereas the establishment of the week of March 17th through 23rd, 2019, as National Surveyors Week, is a fitting tribute to all surveyors, now therefore be it proclaimed on this 12th day of March, 2019, by the city council of the City of Kattati, does hereby recognize the week of March 17th through March 23rd, 2019, as National Surveyors Week in the City of Kattati. And with that, if you have any comments you'd like to make, we'd be delighted.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Deloso. As everybody knows, surveying is a very poorly understood profession. Very rarely do you meet somebody who knows exactly what we do, and can read our documents, and understand everything that we do, but the fact is, is that what we're doing is really laying the foundation for communities. The pipes that we're setting, the monuments that we set, those are the lines, the physical manifestation of lines that people build their lives around. They're people's roads, they're people's fences, you know, the offsets for their setback for their house, and then the records that we write, those are then passed down for generations, that we can record for generations to come, how we have formed our communities, and the places that we choose to develop, and the places that we choose to leave for future generations. So, while it's not a very glamorous profession, it's one that requires diligence and intelligence, but it's also a very important profession to all of us and our communities, so thank you for recognizing our efforts.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Any comments from anyone up at the dais? I'm seeing no on this side, no on that side, great.
Man!
I know, that's... Well then, maybe I do have a homework assignment for you.
Okay.
I'll let it go this time. Alrighty, now we're moving into item eight, which is presentations, and I will turn that over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Sergeant Gooden, post. Tonight, we take this opportunity to celebrate success, and we are promoting two corporals and two sergeants this evening, so I wanna talk about the corporal rank first, 'cause some people may wonder how that works. So the corporal rank is the introductory rank to supervision. Corporals are in charge of a shift during the absence of the police sergeant. They do very important things. Corporals approve police reports, which is significant, so police reports go to the district attorney's office for prosecution, and Kattati Police Department is known to submit outstanding investigations and investigations to the district attorney's office, and by the corporals reviewing reports, they make sure that we maintain that level that we're known of at Kattati PD. A very important duty is also training our new officers, so corporals are field training officers as well, and they mentor our newest officers, and eventually, within a two-year period, the corporals will attend a supervisory school, which is commissioned and certified by the peace officers' standards and training, it's an 80-hour course, so that's the corporals. The sergeants do everything the corporals do. In addition to that, they're always supervisors, sergeants are always supervisors, and they do other things, like they write performance evaluations for employees to make them a success. As far as investigations, they can also be assigned an internal affairs investigation, which is always fun. We may have them author grants for the police department, they help me with payroll sometimes, and then they help with the schedule, which is pretty tricky with 24/7 coverage of both police and dispatch. So that's not all the sergeants and corporals do, but that's a lot of it. Once a police officer is a sergeant for two years, 'cause they also go to the supervisory school, if they have enough education units, they're eligible for their post-supervisory certificate, and that makes them eligible to promote to the rank of police lieutenant. So the track is, for us, it's police reserve, police officer, police corporal, sergeant, lieutenant. So that's where we're at in the scheme of things. So I wanted to introduce Corporal Brandon Mitchell first. If you listen to a police scanner, he is SAM 11. So Brandon has a bachelor's degree, has a bachelor's of science degree from Sonoma State University, and he's also a graduate of SRJC's Police Academy. While he was in college, he interned and volunteered at Petaluma Police Department, however, he ended up choosing to become a Kattati police officer. He started as a reserve police officer in July of 2015. He volunteered his time to do the field training officer program while he was working at Marin County as a public works personnel. And then, after he got through FTO, in December of 2015, he became full-time. And Brandon has just completed the field training officer's school, so that he can now train trainees. And so at this time, I wanna have Brandon's father, Stephen Mitchell, come up and pin his corporal badge on.
Excuse me, before you do that pinning, you can keep coming up, do any of our photographers need to readjust and get into a different location? Now's the time?
No.
No, you can still come up, though.
Stephen, yeah, you still need to come up. So, I asked Brandon's dad how long he's been growing that beard, 'cause I just had it known, so for the record, it's two years it took to grow that beard, if anybody's wondering. Okay, so next I'm gonna introduce Brian Deaton, our corporal, who is SAM 10, and he's also a graduate of the Santa Rosa JC Police Academy. He became a reserve police officer here at Kattati in January of 2013, and he completed his field training program, he volunteered as well, while working full-time for Garda, doing cash logistics. So in English, cash logistics means you drive a armored car to banks to banks, so that's what he did. He got hired full-time in August of 2013 that year, and then, he's the lucky one, he always has a beat partner, Remo, our canine, so when Cota retired, Brian was lucky enough to be our canine handler, and he has Remo with him just about always. He is also an FTO, pretty recent, he's become an FTO, and he is also our department's TASER instructor, so... So his mother Helen and his dad Rick are gonna pin the badge on Corporal Deaton.
The way you guys are moving around, it's really good.
Okay, so next, I wanna recognize Sergeant Bee Gao. She's been with the police department the longest by far, longer than me even. Sergeant Gao, also known as SAM 2, by the way. She has an AA degree in criminal justice from SRJC, and she is really close to getting her four-year degree from Sonoma State University. What do you, about a year, Bee, closer? Hopefully. She's also a Santa Rosa JC Police Academy graduate, and she started as a reserve police officer in October of 2006. She became a full-time officer in July of 2011, promoted to corporal in December of 2017. She is our Thomas Page Police liaison, that's part of her internship for her college program, and she's been an FTO for several years. We did send Bee to a leadership development course, which was 64 hours and apparently a lot of work, I hear, and so she's a graduate of that. And so Sergeant Gao's mother, Maria, is going to pin on her badge. Sergeant Gooden is also a SRJC Police Academy graduate. He became a reserve police officer in Kattati in August of 2012. He completed his field training officer program while working as a security guard. He was hired full-time in October of 2013, promoted to corporal in November 2016, and most recently sergeant, December of 2017. He is our department range master, and he's been an FTO for several years now. And Paul's girlfriend, Kirsten, is gonna pin the badge on Paul. And Paul's girlfriend, Kirsten, is going to pin the badge on Paul. Sergeant Gooden, post. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn them over to you.
You guys have all been nice to me, though, so I can't really, I'll be nice tonight, I promise you. Although, I think I still owe Bee cookies from something from a long time ago. Yeah, I know, I'm pretty feel, pretty bad about that. Congratulations to all four of you. Before we go into any kind of comments or questions from council, I just think it's worth one more big round of applause for all four of them. Okay, now, we can take them apart. We'll start with Councilmember Landman.
All right, so, I have those calculus questions I didn't use in Lydia. So, if I divide them up by four, actually, no. I'm going to be serious about this, because this is, it's a fun, but it's a serious and a joyous occasion, really, for this community. I think the families gathered here know better than anybody how difficult your job is sometimes. It's not always sweetness and light dealing with the public as a police officer. You have difficult things to do. That's a difficult thing to do. I used to be a fireman, it was easy, everybody liked us. Almost unfair. So, I do appreciate having family members that are police officers, what your job entails on a regular basis. Having said that, I think it's really important for you to know, despite that, how important your continued existence is to this community, and how highly everybody in Kattati values what you do and having you here to protect them. That's not lost, and that's the incredible amount of support that the Kattati Police Department has in Kattati, and continues to have through the efforts you've done in these last years under Chief Parish. So, I wanted to say that, because I want you to never forget, when you're out there doing your job, no matter how difficult or how mundane it may be, even if it's helping just get a dog in a car, or whatever it might be, how important you are and how important what you do is to this community. So, thank you, and congratulations, welcome to paperwork world.
Vice Mayor Skilman.
Oh, I don't want to follow that. Okay. No, thank you guys all for your continued service, and it's just, it's, it is an incredibly important and sometimes unrewarding job on certain days, but on other days, it's just amazing to see the impact that you have on people's day-to-day lives. So, really, please continue to stay safe, and we appreciate all that you do and the sacrifices that you make for your service. So, thank you guys all, and keep up the great work, and I love seeing you guys out there.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, and congratulations. It's wonderful to see that within our police department, that people are promoted from within, and that they have a path, nice path laid out. I think that that says a whole lot about our department, how they do care about their employees and want to see them progress. As was said, I know that you have a very difficult job. We appreciate you, and I know the citizens of Kattati appreciate you, and thank you for choosing us to work at. And I look forward to seeing you guys out on the street. Congratulations.
Councilmember Moore.
I would echo the sentiment of my fellow councilmembers. I think you guys are doing a great job out there. Congratulations, it's nice to see you promoting within, as Councilmember Harvey said. And I really enjoy seeing the engagement in the community. You can really tell. So, keep up the good work, congrats.
In fact...
Oh, it's homework, man?
Yeah, I think I can. You know, a lot of people in town, just in different areas, have been asking about the neighborhood program. And I don't know if anybody's willing to talk about it, if you've taken part in any of the neighborhood discussions, I'd love to hear from that, if you want to step up. And if you haven't, you can just say, "No, we haven't." Ah, there we go.
So, I was fortunate enough to host the Neighborhood Watch meeting just last week, I think it was. But in addition to that, I've had multiple people within the community actually email me and voice their concerns, some things that are non-urgent, some things that I can get to on days that I'm working. And it's been nice to have that kind of personal communication with the community, even if it's not face-to-face, even if it's just electronically, so it's been nice.
That's great, it's good to hear. I think, you know, there's a stereotype and a bias with police officers. It's typically, "Oh, a police officer is coming to talk to me, I've done something wrong." And that's not always the case. So, it's great that you guys are going to be getting out into the community more and more. I think we need to have more of that, and because you're humans, you live in the area, you're like everybody else out here. But at the same time, you do have a very difficult job. And, you know, when you, when you unfortunately watch the news, which we shouldn't sometimes, but, you know, there's just a lot of stories out there that involve police officers, some that are positive, some that aren't. And I just want to say that, you know, what we've got going on in Kattati, I think, is a really good situation. We've got a great crew of them, they're all around this room right now. In fact, is the whole department in here? It's pretty darn close. Somebody's at dispatch, I hope, right? At least. Anyway, so, thank you. I do appreciate hearing a little bit of feedback, I was curious about that, that's great.
Sure, thank you.
That's great. Again, thank you, all of you, congratulations. We look forward to seeing you during the next 25 to 35 years here in Kattati. Just saying. And for those of you who are here supporting them, I have an inkling that you may be leaving shortly after they go and sit down, because they'll be leaving, and that's okay. But when you do that, if you could go beyond the hallway and outside, because we still have our meeting to go on, you guys are welcome to stay, I know better. Thank you again, and congratulations one more time to you guys.
Well, you know how to clear a room, huh?
Pretty much.
Where's the cupcakes?
Huh?
Where's the cupcakes?
Do you want a bio break?
Probably over in the police department, don't get it.
Seems like I've perfected the art of clearing a room. It's pretty amazing. And almost all of them got the message about going outside if they're going to have a conversation. But for now, can you guys in the audience hear us well enough? Yeah? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and continue. We're on item nine, which is approval of final agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
No changes, all right, thank you. Item 10 is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda or within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. I do not have any speaker cards, is that correct? Thank you. All right, so, Ms. Alderman, please.
First, I'd like to say Mr. Moore did not move away from the flag during the pledge, he blocked the flag, so that needs to be corrected. Last council meeting, I did not come, because I'm tired of being down, degraded by you all. And after George left, there was not a single citizen here. There was no public comment on citizens' business or any of the agenda items after that. You guys need to work on making this a place where, this is the people's house. I mean, this is where we're supposed to be, not being told by, it is a public record, I've been asking for nine months now, for Mr. Moore wrote a degrading comment on his city email account. It is a requestable public record, and he's even denied that it exists. That needs to stop. That kind of things, you need to admit when you're wrong, and correct, and apologize. There's no excuse for nine months now of no apology, and more degradation every time I bring it up. Also, I think that's it with citizen comment, actually.
Sorry, did you have anything for consent?
I wanted to move on to...
Consent?
Consent. I wanted to do Bee, the design and materials. Why are we, I think it was 90, $90,000 for the original study, and this is an amendment to bring it up 50 more thousand for the pavement and streets repair in the future. Have you looked at our streets out lately, especially after the storms? Why are we putting more money into studies and plans rather than into the streets and filling potholes and everything? And a year ago, 2017 to 2018, you spent hardly anything on street repairs. You had a big bump this summer, but the year before, you had something less than $40,000 or something. So, you need to be working, not on the future, but using these dollars in the present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Mr. Berich?
Councilman George Berich, for the record. For the people here in the audience tonight, and people at home, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here who served with honor and dignity. And I want to state something about the flag salute tonight. In years past, citizens have brought up the fact that proper flag etiquette for city council meeting is to respect the flag, and during the pledge, to anybody seated in front of the flag should step aside in courtesy and respect for the flag. And Mr. Landman made that mistake when he came on the council, he stood in front of the flag. And a few of us graciously and respectfully simply asked Mr. Landman if he would step aside during that portion, as I did when I sat in that seat, as other council members who sat in that seat did, stepped aside, as Ms. Skilman wonderfully did as well. I can't remember if any of the rest of you did. But Mr. Landman, for that full year, refused to move aside in defiance, trying to show power, and some power play, some sick power play. But anyway, I digress. I've also asked Mr. Moore if he would be so kind as to move aside, and he has also refused, showing the lack of maturity and disrespect for the flag and for these proceedings, and to stick his nose up in the air to proper etiquette. The lineup on the agenda tonight was wrong. I'd have to ask city manager, I don't understand why the promotional ceremony for the new sergeants was not the first item on the agenda tonight. That would have made much more sense. The honorary mayor could have come afterwards, the presentation for the surveyors could have come afterwards. This was just silly. And Mayor, you're responsible for also helping the city manager set forth the agenda. And I was a little surprised that we had to put the members of the public through the corny questions of the honorary mayor and so forth, which was really difficult to sit through, I have to say. Also, I have to agree with Lori Alderman, that Old Redwood Highway is full of potholes and pavement failures after, how much money did we spend on that, redoing that street? And that street should be repaired, as Lori said, before any more money is spent towards consulting on street design and street repair going forward. It's really an embarrassment. That street sees some 26,000 car trips a day, and it says a lot that it's not in proper condition. And the city manager has already assured the council that those repairs were to be done some time ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on public comment? All right, seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public comment. And we will move into item 11, which is the consent calendar. We have two items under item 11.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Do we have any further discussion on either item, any item? No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, that's a 5-0 vote in favor to pass both items A and B. And now, we're at item 12, direction on future agenda items. Let me look, I'm going to go left this time. We'll start with Councilmember Landman, you have something, please.
That's a perfect direction to look, because I actually do have something for you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to see if we could schedule a time to invite Mr. Brian Alby, the head of Sonoma County Transit, to come present to us. He's interested in presenting something about a fare-free route program that has just developed. This is something I'm bringing from SETA that we actually just saw, just the other day. And it actually comes, it originated in Sebastopol, thanks to Councilmember Mayor Sarah Gurney. And it's actually rather remarkable. This is just basically a local, community-based shuttle that drives to support the community. It is fare-free. The concept is you don't pay, you don't have to worry about a clipper card, you don't have to make change. And it's been going for about a year there. But what was interesting is we finally got some data on what's going on there, what the result has been and what the cost has been, and that's why I'm bringing it back here. So, it's been done in Sebastopol, followed by Healdsburg, Windsor, and the town of Sonoma, as well as up in the unincorporated area of the river. The cost in Sebastopol, which is pretty much close to our size, $11,481 a year. So, that's pretty inexpensive for a full-time, free shuttle fare to drive people around. But here's the best part, it's just the cost, because it's also, do you get something? Even if it's cheap, if you don't get value. In Sebastopol, in seven months of service, they've seen a 50% jump in ridership on those routes. In Healdsburg, in seven months, 40%. In Windsor, in five months, they've seen 78%. Sonoma's only got 16, but that's one month. So, that gives you an idea. So, I'd like to see, I think Mr. Alby's interested in coming to visit us, to talk to us about it. They'd like to see if we can get this going in all the communities that don't have a service like that. And if you think of something that could connect our smart station, our downtown, and certainly the west side of Kattati, that could provide a lot of value. So, we'll have to see what they bring. But I'd like to see if, when he contacts you, we could have that on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else? No items, no other items? All right, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Item 13 is public hearings. Our first item is adoption of resolution authorizing the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Francis Nassar, owner of Sam's Taxi, to operate vehicles for hire. I'll turn that over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. So, our applicant, Francis Nassar, he is here tonight. He's in the back there waving to you. So, he is present. And for your consideration, we're authorizing an issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Francis, and he's the new owner of Sam's Taxi to operate vehicles for hire in our city. So, per our ordinance, we must hold a public hearing to review requests for issuance of certificates of public convenience and necessity. And Francis Nassar, owner, operators of Sam Taxi, has requested approval to operate within the city of Kattati. Sam's Taxi was previously owned by... Sam's Taxi was previously owned by Francis's uncle Sam, the previous owner of Sam Taxi, and he's recently purchased the business and they are currently licensed to also operate in the city of Runer Park. So under analysis and discussion regarding that the applicant is financially responsible and the applicant is of good moral character, staff has determined that the applicant appears to be financially responsible as he is operating without any known financial attachments. The applicant is of good moral character based on local criminal records checks and a criminal history check by the Department of Justice. So he was fingerprinted by us and we did some computer-aided dispatch record management searches that reveal no issues with Francis and all of his drivers will be mandated to go through the same check. The persons holding the permits or license are under the experience and efficient management, earning a fair and reasonable return of their capital devoted to such service. So I did confirm that Sam's Taxi currently, as I said, operates in the city of Runer Park. I checked with their staff and that was their traffic sergeant, Jared Marshall, who confirmed that there are no, that the police department or the city of Runer Park are having no issues with Sam Taxi operating in their city right now whatsoever. The applicant has complied with the provisions of all city, state and federal laws applicable to the proposed operation. And this additional service will not result in greater hazard to the public and will not create traffic congestion or parking problems. And as we know, it's also an option for somebody to choose to not drink and drive. And what's not in the report is that not everybody's tech savvy with the Uber, Lyft. I know that's out there and there's all the apps, but not everybody, not everybody has, has that on their smartphone. And so therefore I do recommend that council allow Sam's to operate in Katati again. They've operated in the past. And so that would leave us with Ace Taxi, Sam's Taxi and Jay's Taxi. So we have three in our city and we would have Uber and Lyft. And again, Francis is here and he said he'd be happy to answer any questions that council had. So, thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Yes, councilmember Harvey.
I just have one. Will we be getting new certificates of liability insurance because these certificates of insurance are for the previous owner?
Yes. Actually, he's, Francis has already provided these, but if you look on there, Sam's Taxi is on there.
Right. But the previous owners are listed as the insured also doing business as Sam's Taxi. So I would think that he would have, he would be the insured and also Sam's Taxi.
You can. So he's provided, he just provided this week additional insurance.
Okay.
And we have that.
Okay. That was just my question. I noticed it was in the previous owner's name.
So I'm comfortable with the insurance.
Okay.
Great. Councilmember Moore, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I think it's commendable that you're still trying to afford that opportunity for people that may not be tech savvy. So, no, I don't have any additional questions.
All right. Any questions to this direction? No? And no? All right. With that, I'd like to open up the, for public comment. Mr. Nassar, if you'd like to come up and if you have anything you'd like to say, come on up. No homework assignments. We're done with that.
I don't have any que, if you guys have any questions, I'm ready to answer any questions. But.
Did you want to address that liabilities, the insurance?
About the insurance? Yeah, actually, I'm working on it. This week, I'm gonna, we're doing a renewal for the insurance, so my name is gonna be on it. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great. Yeah, I don't think we have any questions directly for you, so.
Just welcome to Katati and thank you for choosing to give another option to our people here. We appreciate it.
Sir, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I am tech savvy, but I do not have Uber or Lyft on my phone. So, you know, you can be, yeah, I just don't want to have, create biases here. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do want to notice before I move this resolution, some complaint when the chief was talking about older, non-tech savvy people don't have a Lyft, he did look my way.
Okay.
There may be some tooth to that. Nevertheless, maybe that's the reason why. I'm very pleased.
Can I make a comment really quickly?
Please.
So, sorry. No, I, I was just wanting to comment and I'm not trying to pick on any ride shares, so please don't send me emails. But one of the things that I, is noteworthy, especially with the work that I do, there's more vetting and background checks on taxi drivers than there are on Uber or Lyft drivers. I could literally walk in with my driver's license and become an Uber or Lyft driver with the zero fingerprinting. So I just really try to encourage my kids. I think it's a much safer option. So, that being said.
Well, I'm gonna thank you. That was like a backstop because I feel better about not having Uber and Lyft on my phone now. So with that, I'd like to move a resolution authorizing the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Francis Nassar, owner of Sam's Taxi, to operate a taxi service in the city of Katati.
I'll second.
All right. A motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I would like to amend that motion to include upon receipt of the certified liability insurance.
Certainly.
And I'll second that with the amendment.
That's very interesting. I, just as a side note, I think when we were at the league conference in Sacramento, that it was more than suggested that when you have an amendment to a motion, that you should vote, I hope I have this right, I don't have my notes in front of me, that you should vote on the original motion and then vote on the amendment. Looking for help from the city attorney.
Well, my recollection is different. It may be incorrect. I think you vote on the amendment first and then you go to the main motion, but I have not looked at Rosenberg's rules, which you operate under in quite some time. So.
And given that Rosenberg's is given to make things as expedient and easy as possible, I'm happy to accept that amendment, although most notably, I noticed that our police chief was acceptance and I didn't see either of attorneys raise their hand, although I saw them look up slightly. So I felt a degree of comfort.
Well, I mean, I think, I think we're certainly covered, so we can continue doing the way we have, but I'll, I'll look up my notes and the reference to it. So it sounds like amendment has been made.
I would concur with our city attorney, Donahue, that you vote on the second, or vote on.
Yeah, and I, you know, I just wanted to bring that up just as a, you know, fun little conversation piece, but we'll move on. So councilmember Landman has modified his motion to add, see the updated.
I have.
Insurance. Yes, I know you have. Thank you. And you ceded that again. I'm not gonna ask for any further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Show that that's a five oh vote and welcome to Katati. Thank you. All right. And now we are at item fourteen A. And that is the regular agenda and it's to review the proposed water transmission system budget, Sonoma County Water Agency fiscal year 2019 to 2020. And I'll start that with Craig Scott. Yes?
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, public works director, city engineer. The item before us tonight is the consideration of the, we'll receive a presentation on the Sonoma County Water Agency's fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. And the agency is now wanting to be referred to as Sonoma Water. So we'll, you will hear that term and see that term on the PowerPoint, just to encompass everything that Sonoma Water does. Once we receive the report, I mean, the objective tonight is to give, provide direction to the city's water advisory committee member, who is councilmember Harvey. And Ms. Harvey is also the chair of the water advisory committee. And just for everyone's benefit for review, the water advisory is made up of elected council members of representing cities that are contractors or they receive wholesale water from Sonoma Water. The city receives about three quarters of our annual water supply and then a quarter from Sonoma Water and a quarter comes from wells. So this water advisory committee considers items such as including the budget in having a say in how that water, wholesale water supplier operates. Back in, this is annual process to prepare and have water agency members review the budget. The technical advisory committee of that body was formed back in December. We received the draft budget in February, met in, in January, met a couple times. It's been presented to the WAC, the water advisory committee, back on February fourth, at which time the water advisory committee set April eighth as a special meeting, it starts at ten, not nine, to adopt the budget. The special, or the technical advisory committee subcommittee that considered the budget was comprised of a subset of the member agencies, myself, someone from North Marin Water District, Town of Windsor, Marin Water, Valley of the Moon Water District and Santa Rosa. The city, just cut into the chase before, I let, leave it to Lynn Roselli for the presentation. The city has a four-year water rate plan and so we have, using the calculation of expenses, projected or set a five percent rate increase. And the proposed water agency or Sonoma Water budget falls below that at four point six percent. That is pretty, pretty minor, or it's, it's pretty much aligns with our projections. So just in case you were wondering, wanted to get that out front. So without going, doing, saying anything more, here's Ms. Roselli to make the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having the Sonoma County Water Agency tonight present our brief presentation on the proposed nineteen twenty water transmission budget and rates. I'm Lynn Roselli with the Sonoma County Water Agency. Jump right into it. We did work, as, as Craig Scott mentioned, we did work collaboratively with the technical advisory committee budget subcommittee. We went through a couple of iterations of the budget. We appreciate them, the work that Craig and the other members of the budget subcommittee, the work that they did to provide input on the budget and rates. It's work in addition to their regular day jobs, so we recognize the commitment that they make and the work that they do. The budget is based on forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy acre feet in deliveries. That is a five percent increase over the fiscal year eighteen nineteen budgeted water deliveries. Each of the line items you see in this table are rates that generate revenue that allow us to operate and maintain the water transmission system, implement projects required under the biological opinion, construct capital infrastructure projects, provide for a prudent reserve, pay debt service. And there's also a line item on the table that is a discretionary charge, that's the capital charge. That capital charge is for the aqueducts, specific to the aqueducts. Water contractors provide input on each of those, on, on that line item. It helps stabilize the rate. It also helps build fund balance for future capital projects. The rate for fiscal year eighteen nineteen was set at nineteen dollars and fifty cents an acre foot. The rate this year has been increased to twenty-seven dollars per acre foot. That again helps build fund balance as water deliveries increase and you, you build fund balance, you can use that to pay for capital projects on the Petaluma Aqueduct. So the total rate for the Petaluma Aqueduct is nine hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents per acre foot. That is a four point six percent rate increase over fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And I'll go into a brief example of how the rate is calculated. It's prescribed by the restructure agreement for water supply that is signed by all of the water contractors. It takes the cost of operations and maintenance. It divides by the quantity of water sold and gives us the cost of water per acre foot. This restructured agreement tells us that we have to select the lower of the twelve months, last twelve months of water deliveries or the three-year annual average. And because of the drought, the three-year annual average is the lower of the two. And when we do the math, you can see that you get the rate of nine hundred, nine hundred eighteen dollars per acre foot. This is a fully volumetric rate. There is no fixed charge. It is very sensitive to increases and decreases in water deliveries. If the water deliveries were the same as they were a couple of years ago, which was forty thousand acre feet, given the same expenditures, the rate increase would have been fourteen, over fourteen percent. So it's very sensitive to, to water deliveries. The budget is a fifty-one point six million dollar gross budget. It is made up of fifty-four percent operations and maintenance costs, twenty percent are capital projects, seventeen percent is biological opinion compliance, water supply planning and water conservation, nine percent is debt service and we offset those expenditures with grants, bond proceeds and use of fund balance in the amount of seven million dollars. This is a comparison of the budget compared to this fiscal year's budget. As again, you can see the total is fifty-one point six one million dollars. That represents an eleven million dollar increase. And each of the line items there have increases except the debt service. The debt service is going down because we are issuing bonds this fiscal year and the cost of issuance is included in this fiscal year, so bond, the debt service actually is decreasing next fiscal year. We had a rate increase of three point six seven percent last year and have had fairly low rate increases over the past few years, which required that we defer some maintenance and capital projects. As a result, because water deliveries are increasing now, we are able to not only catch up on the deferred maintenance and capital projects, but also use grants and fund balance and bond proceeds to help offset the costs and also save some for, you know, increase our fund balance in some of the funds as well. Operations and maintenance is going up because we have a ten-year, thirty-eight million dollar tank maintenance program that we will be implementing for fiscal year nineteen twenty. There's, it's three million dollars for the tank maintenance program. There's also, the tank maintenance includes tank recoats, improving the cathodic protection on the tanks and other tank improvements. And that will be, we have eighteen tanks that store one hundred and thirty million gallons of water. So it's a ten-year program. We've spread the costs out over a ten-year period. Capital projects are increasing. We have several capital projects that will be going to construction this fiscal year, next fiscal year. The biological opinion compliance, the reason for that increase is the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Project. We will be designing and beginning construction on phases four, five and six, or miles four, five and six, beginning not nineteen twenty, but twenty twenty-one, and I'll talk about that in another slide. And again, we have grants, use of fund balance and bond proceeds that offset those costs. About seventy-five percent of that seven million is bond proceeds and approximately ten percent is grant money and the remainder is fund balance and some of the capital aqueduct funds. Historical water deliveries, just to give you an example, we have seen a decrease of thirty-three percent in water deliveries since two thousand and eight, somewhat due to economic downturns. Another part was due to the drought. When deliveries, our actual deliveries are over or above the budgeted amount of deliveries, we're able to store fund balance as we did in twelve, fiscal year twelve thirteen. You can see that the red line is above the blue line. And then we were able to use that fund balance to smooth the rates out so that when we hit the drought conditions and we delivered less than we budgeted, we're able to use that fund balance to smooth out the rate. We're beginning to increase deliveries again and we're going to be able to, again, implement some deferred maintenance and capital projects, but also reserve some in a prudent reserve account so that if and when the next, well, when the next drought occurs, we will have some fund balance to be able to smooth out the rate and keep the rate increase within the four to six percent range that is informed by our long-range financial planning process. Few of the projects that we wanted to highlight, one is the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Project. Miles one, two and three have been paid for by Sonoma Water in a fund that is not the water transmission fund and the costs of those projects have been about eleven point five million. Water Transmission Fund, and the costs of those projects have been about $11.5 million per, per mile. And again, it's a separate fund from the Water Transmission Fund, but miles four, five, and six is included in the water transmission budget. It is a project that is required under the biological opinion and is required not only to help modulate or balance water supply with protection of fish habitat. This project is, the cost share for the water, Sonoma Water, is $20 million over the next six years. We are requiring, we are relying heavily on the Army Corps that is providing 65% to our 35% of the project. The project is not a capital project because it's not a fixed asset. It's, and, and therefore, we cannot use bond funding to fund it or to help pay for the costs of it. We also cannot use much in the way of grant funds because it is required mitigation, and a lot of grant funding does not allow projects that require mitigation to be funded with grant funds. So, over the next six, five to six years, we will be implementing the design and the construction of these projects. The construction begins on miles four, five, and six, not 1920, but 2021. And again, we have been, we have $5 million in fund balance in this fund, so we'll be using that to help smooth out the rate as well going forward. Other capital projects include the Warm Springs Dam Hydro Turbine retrofit, the Mirabelle Dam bladder replacement, which is being done in two phases. One is a long lead time for buying the bladder, and the second is to actually install the bladder. We have some replacement of pumps. The Caltrans Petaluma Aqueduct Relocation Project is occurring, will be occurring next year on the Petaluma Aqueduct. That's a $1.6 million project. And then there's the Sonoma Booster Pump Station Project that is on the Sonoma Aqueduct, and only the Sonoma Aqueduct customers pay for that particular project. And again, the maintenance projects I mentioned, the tank maintenance program, the collector wells have hundreds of valves and meters and other equipment that needs to be replaced, and that will also be occurring in fiscal year 1920. Water contractors ask us to provide a comparison of our water rates, wholesale water rates, with other wholesale water contractors. We are on the far left there at $918.30. We're the lowest of the others that are shown. It's not meant to be an apples-to-apples comparison, but when these other water contractors needed to raise rates during the drought, we were able to keep ours at 4% to 6%, so we're able to keep ours a little bit lower than, you know, keep ours smoother and lower than some of the other water contractors, wholesale water contractors. There is one water contractor, the San Juan Water District, that is, has a lower rate, and they serve about the same number of customers, but their rate increase two years ago was 16%, and last year was 9%, and this year is 9% rate increases. So, we feel pretty good to still be within that 4% to 6% rate increase, and we're at the lower end of the rate increase, so we feel pretty good about that. And just to sum up, the rate is $918.30. It's a 4.6% rate increase. On the Petaluma Aqueduct, it includes a $27 per acre foot capital charge to build fund balance for future capital projects. The Technical Advisory Committee voted on March 4th to approve the 1920 budget and rates on the water transmission system. We're presenting the budget to city and town councils and water districts during the month of March. The Water Advisory Committee will vote on Monday, April 8th at 10:00 a.m., and our board will adopt the, the water transmission budget and rates on April 16th. And with that, I am available for any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That was a lot in a really short period of time. That was very good. I'll start with our representative, Councilmember Harvey.
Well, thank you, Lynn. Thank you for the summary. Thank you to the TAC members for all the work that, that they've done. And I've been through this. You guys did a, a great job on this. For council members, in case they want kind of to look at some specific things, not right this second, but in, in their own time, there's a nice summary of the whole plethora and costs of the capital projects on page 49. People often ask about Marin County. There's a nice summary of all the different aqueducts and all the different water agencies on page 54, so you can see how that works out based upon the agreement. And then all of the maintenance, there's some really nice explanations of that when you get down to about 68 and 69. So, there's a lot of detail in here, and it's very helpful to be able to review that based upon that detail. So, I just need the direction from the council, but I do appreciate all the work that went into this. I can remember the first time I went to a Water Advisory Committee meeting. Councilmember Landman and I went. It wasn't a very pleasant meeting. It was about the budget, and it was really brutal. So, it's so nice that we've, we've come so far and are able to, to balance things out. And, you know, that smoothing is really, is really important because if you look back, I don't know what page it's on, but you can look back and see some of the rate increases, and we had, you know, like 10% and 15% rate increases, and that's really hard to swallow, and it's difficult for us to have to explain to our constituents that. So, it's very nice that everyone's working together to be able to smooth that out and, and stay between that 4% and 6% so that we can plan, have a five-year plan for our water rates. I think that that's helpful for people.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right. This direction, Councilmember Landman. Any questions for the presentation? After public, sure? But, okay. Vice Mayor, nothing? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. Ms. Alderman.
I think there should be some public education, maybe in the water bills and sewer bills, on how the Sonoma County water rates and basically the sewage and all that goes into the rate, the costs of your bill. I don't think people understand that in Catati, especially my elderly mother, who you, one of you needs to call her because she's just got her biggest sewer and water bill that she ever had after 47 years, and she's not happy. Thank you.
Thank you. I will not be making that phone call, just to be clear. Mr. Beridge.
Counsel, I would also reiterate what Lori has asked for, is we need more independent education here regarding our water situation for more device, diverse sources of information. I understand that Sonoma County has been selling millions and millions of acres of water to Marin for many years, and there are experts in the field like Mr. John King, who would probably be more than happy to come here and give you a little different perspective on this. Many of us moved up to Sonoma County from the peninsula and Marin County because, you know, we came here for the water, and we came here for the quality of life, but, but because of an abundance of water, and we've seen that change over 30 years. And this whole issue that old ratepayers are paying the, for new development and funding water for the new developments at an unfair, an unfair situation. I'd like to see more study. Mr. Landman has said on a few occasions that water's complicated. That presentation was very good, but it's complicated, and there are other, other opinions and viewpoints on how we are managing our water and how we're mismanaging our water, and why we're giving preferential treatments to other counties and so forth at the expense of our quality of life and our water resources for future generations. So, sometimes there's a lack of effort to want to put things on a future agenda. Here's one where many of us water customers are getting really sick and tired of these rate increases, and we need a little bit more logic and common sense and justification why we're going down this road.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this topic? All right. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to council for direction.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
Just a quick comment. Well, Ms. Roselli, you can take back to Sonoma Water, the news that people are actually moving to this county because of the water you provide. So, that's kind of news breaking here tonight and something Mr. Davis will be happy to hear, I'm sure. But I did want to just thank Chair Harvey as well as Mr. Davis at Sonoma Water for everything they've done over this last decade. I'm trying to remember the name of your predecessor, and it's...
Randy Bull?
No, no, no. Who came, had to come here and do the difficult stuff for the economic presentations. Spencer, Spencer Bader. That was it, yes. Although we grew to be friendly, the early years were not easy, and I think the result of that strife is a much better place. I really appreciate the work you, and thoughtfulness you put into removing the sharp points of the wave for the people of this county, particularly with a system that's so sensitive to water deliveries, as you very clearly showed us. That's of key importance, and it just pleases me very much to see what the work you're doing. So, here we are a decade later, and I'm very pleased, and if no one has any comments, to move to direct our representative to support this budget at the WAC.
Second, I don't think we need a second. We're just, this is just direction to move it forward, right?
It says, "Adopt a motion providing direction," so we can go anywhere we want, but I think direction is probably adequate, and, and that's where I'd be tonight if the rest of the council is.
My eyes go straight to that table over there to find out if, if his direction is good enough, or if you'd like a motion.
Probably, but we agendized it as a motion, and I think the agency might appreciate that. Thank you.
Then I will, I will move that we give that direction, and look for a second.
I will second that. Move.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Oops, yes. Lynn, you can correct me if I'm wrong. There was some discussion around Marin, and I just want to point out that Marin does get water from us, but they, their estimated amount that they get is 969 acre feet a year, and that's on page, let's see, what page is this? Page 60. And for the primes, which is all the cities in Sonoma County, we have 37,571 acre feet. So, they're like nowhere, they're getting a minuscule amount of their water. That restructured agreement, there's, that has been in place. I can't remember how long it's been in place. Lynn probably knows that, but it's very complicated. It took many, 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 many years to get that restructured agreement there, and what I have heard from folks is be careful what you ask for. Some people say, "Oh, I want to change this, I want to change that." You open up that water agreement, and it is going to be something quite different at the very end of that. And lastly, the work on Dry Creek, I think that that work is really important, that work has been holding up very well. It's wonderful that the Army Corps is helping us so much. And again, Lynn probably knows this number better than I, but I remember when we first started doing this, they weren't sure if that work was going to work, and it was going to be an astronomical amount of money for us to run a pipeline from Sonoma, like Warm Springs Dam down there, and it was just a crazy amount of money that that was going to be. So, it's wonderful that this Dry Creek restoration is, is working, and we are able to meet the biological opinion by doing that. So, I just wanted to add that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Please show that's a 5-0 vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you for the direction.
Absolutely. Now, we're at item 15, which is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, first of all, I just wanted to mention that Measure M, not the road, the roads measure M that we probably are all familiar with, but the more recent Measure M for parks, that, that was passed by the voters last November. They are in the process now of forming their Oversight Board, and you may have seen an email go out looking for Oversight, or members for the Oversight Board, actually nominations for that. And I just wanted to point out that you'll find information on this on our website, the city's website, in our headlines, how to find an application, how to, you know, submit the nomination, what the Oversight Board does, and so forth. So, that's, that is there for anyone that's interested, and just to get the word out for anyone that wants to serve in that capacity. The Laguna Bypass Sewer, so the contractor is now doing the finishing work, including patching, striping, and other punchless items this week on the sewer. So, this, we expect that the sewer mostly will be complete here very shortly, over the next couple of weeks. And then, and then they'll tie into the water main in Old Red, and there'll be some day work on Overwood Highway, and then that'll be the end of the job. So, it'll be coming to an end pretty quickly here. And then on the recreation front, on March 2nd, we had our third annual Catati Iterod Shopping Cart Race. This is, it takes place in La Plaza and goes throughout Catati. It was successful and raised food and, and money for the Redwood Empire Food Bank. We raised, or they, I should say, they raised 900 pounds of food, enough for 970 meals for people that needed that. And the event also collected almost $1,500 in cash and sponsorship donations for the food bank. There were five teams this year, so it's progressively getting bigger each year. This is modeled after the Catati model, so it's, it's a good event. Next week, during school spring break, we're, we're running the, our sold-out Camp Catati Spring Break Camp, Monday through Friday for families. So, don't sign up for that because it's already all full, but it'll be fun, and it'll have, I believe, some tie-ins with Veronda Fleddy Ranch for some of the kids to do some fun things. And then next Friday, March 22nd, Farmster will host their monthly Open Farm Friday at the Veronda Fleddy Ranch from 3:00 to 5:00. Guests will have a chance to tour the site, learn about the history of the ranch, current operations, future plans, followed by family-friendly, hands-on activities. So, that's right around the corner as well. And then on Saturday, March 30th, we host our second annual Community Yard Sale from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Catati Room behind City Hall here. And on Friday before the sale, March 29th, we're accepting new or gently-used donations for the event from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it's a great way to do some spring cleaning for a good cause, and proceeds benefit the Recreation Department to help provide free and low-cost programs for those in the community that need it. Leftover, leftover items are donated to a local nonprofit. I think, as everyone knows here, April 7th, the Historical Society's having their barbecue right here by the Catati Room. And then on Sunday, April 14th, we're hosting our second annual Bunny Brunch and Egg Hunt in the Catati Room. This event is for families to come have brunch, visit the bunny, make crafts, and finish off the morning with an egg hunt with the children. And it's expected to sell out again, so purchase tickets early, and this can be done through the city website. And actually, we're, I think, already halfway sold out, so sign up now. And then for more information on this or any of our programs or to volunteer for an event, please contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or awilson@catatacity.org. We also have the latest information on upcoming programs at our website and the city's Facebook page. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, and a new baby goat crossed the street, let's not forget. Any questions for the city manager on anything that was reported out?
No, thank you.
Nope? Okay. Move on to item 16, City Councilmember Reports. We'll start with Councilmember Moore.
I do not have any.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey.
The only thing that I have to report is I attended two of the three Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Community Meetings. The first one was up in Santa Rosa at Finley, and I want to guess that there was somewhere between 50 and 100 people there. And then I attended a couple of days later, the one in Riner Park, and there was probably about 25 people there. So, a lot of good input, and it will be very interesting to see where we go with this.
we go with this. A lot of people think that water should be free, and it, we're really constrained by all of the laws on what we can do and what we can charge, and how it has to be fair. And there's, you know, there's kind of a box, and you can't really get out of that box, and you have to do it a certain way. And I know that, that's difficult for some, some folks to understand, but we'll do the best that we can with the, with the data and information. And it sounds like there'll be a lot of opportunity for people to provide very specific impact by those that are impacted about their specific properties. So that will be, that will be good, because we can only do what we have with the information we have. So more to come on that.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman.
Actually, speaking of the baby goat across the street, I volunteered for a few hours on Sunday over at Farmster and got to do a lot of very hard work, which makes me appreciate actual farmers who do this stuff every day. And you can't really say, oh, I don't feel like getting up this morning and feeding the cows. I'm just going to sleep in for a few hours. You just don't have that option. But I got to help with the, the new baby goat, make sure he was nice and healthy. And Nancy, who owns all of the animals, and she had asked if I could help with the big male with the horns that go all the way back. And she said, can you just hang on to him, you know, hold him by the horns while I get his hooves? And I was like, chirr, grabbed him and held him with my feet, you know, and I was just thinking, you know, if he really wants to, he can throw me right now. Like there's just, I have no option. But luckily, he was true to her statement that he was a very sweet goat, and he did not throw me. So I appreciated that. Anyway, it was just not something you would expect to do on a Sunday, but it was a lot of fun. And they were commenting that they're excited about working with the city for getting the internal fencing going, but they just wanted to make sure that they could have some good communication as far as where the gates should go, because it was really challenging stepping over fences and then trying to carry buckets of water to go make sure the goats had what they needed. Anyway, so working gates would be fantastic. And then they're working on, they have, I guess, electricity in the water tower, and they're trying to tap into it so that they can get the mama pig is about to have piglets. So we should be getting at least two more baby goats and then a whole litter of pigs very soon. But she needs, so I was helping her build a pigpen, which I was making silly jokes about, but she's going to have to put a warming lamp in there at some point, so that's why they're working with some folks to get the electrical set up. So anyway, step by step, it's been really great, and they're really excited to be out there and preserving the historical use for that land. So, and then lots of people coming by, and especially checking out the baby. And it's just great. And then we had, like, when I was getting ready to leave, there were some kids had come with their mom, and they're, I think, five and seven, and they were out there helping move the wood pellet chick, wood chips to where they needed to go to help cover up the mud. And so it was just great seeing them getting their hands dirty and playing with the animals and feeding the chicken. So it was great.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, it's a good thing the goat didn't throw you, because I think I could have seen the headline in the paper that, you know, vice mayor for Catati gets thrown off city property by old goat. All right, let's move on. Councilmember.
I'm thinking that's the most embarrassing workman's comp case we've ever seen, potentially. Yeah, you know, that's actually a really exciting report. You know, we walked, my wife and I walked down there the other day by there, and we noticed there were a lot of people, as Councilmember Skilman said, enjoying looking at the animals, looking at the new babies. There were a couple of people sitting in the benches in the new area that's fixed there, and there were a couple of kids playing in the basketball court. And it struck us, she said, you know, this neighborhood's really changed in the last half decade a lot. And it's like, yeah, you know, it all goes bit by bit, piece by piece, but when you stop and look at it, it's moving forward very nicely. And people, and the proof of that is people are out enjoying it. So that makes me happy to see that. So let's see, a couple of things from SETA, RCPA, that's the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and the Regional Climate Protection Authority. I mentioned the fare-free program and asked that to come forward for a discussion, so I won't go into that. We did have a rather long discussion on the CASA compact, and I'll just report out in general, it was interesting. I think it would be fair to generalize and say there was a recognition of the need and a small interest in a discussion, rehousing with the world we live in right now. But at the same time, I also heard numerous concerns regarding both various aspects of the pact, as well as the process, how it came about too in December. And most notably, what I'm hearing a lot from people recognizes perhaps the biggest problem is the one-size-fits-all aspect. And to be fair, the gentleman who was presenting from MTC did say the right things, was paying attention, did say he was hearing that, was taking notes. We'll see what the actions are as we go forward with the legislative process. But that was a better response, perhaps, we've had in other places. So, so all good. So that's all I have to share this particular meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. And for me, just a couple of items. There was, after our last council meeting on that following Thursday, that we had our monthly Ag and Open Space Meeting, and there was probably the most dynamic presentation that I've ever had the staff give, and it was post-fire recovery. They focused on their properties where the October 2017 fires went through, and they have this sophisticated LiDAR satellite imagery of vegetation and vegetative types. And so they were able to show how different vegetative types behaved throughout the fire, where some burned very quickly and maybe just singed, where others created this intense heat. When you get that intense heat, there's this, for lack of a better word, it's kind of a wax substance that forms that covers the soil, and then that's where you get, when those rains come in, that's where you get all the erosion, because it can't penetrate through that waxy substance. It's not wax, but it's just like a waxy substance. So, but they were able to give highly detailed imagery. And the advisory committee, I mean, we were just like, you know, it was hard to talk afterwards. It was just so astounding. And hopefully, they're, they're sharing this with all the different agencies and organizations who were impacted by fire and who may be impacted by fire, because it won't be the last fire that we have. So hopefully, that information will get out even further. But it was really, really good. And then on that following Saturday, the 2nd, bless you, there was, which you two forgot, the ribbon cutting at Acme Burger. So it was great to.
I was going to ask to weigh that back in, but thank you.
Yeah, and I got you. So it was great to, to see that business open up right next to Oliver's. And that was at 5:00, and at 7:00 was the Miss Sonoma County event. So I did go there, and I attended and waved when I was called upon. And then that was that for me. So, all right, let's, oh, I'm sorry, wait, I do have one more item. And I think this is the appropriate place. So there was an email I just got today from the League of California Cities regarding an action alert for SB 5 from Beale-Maguire Local State Sustainable Investment Incentive Program. So they're looking for, the league is, is supporting this bill and looking for some action, a letter preferably, before our next council meeting. I am, I'm missing the, the date, but I think it's next week, if I recall. City manager, do you have that date in your head?
The 20th is the date of the hearing.
The 20th, yeah. So, and of course, our next meeting would be the 25th, I believe. 26th. So with that, I, there's a, a number of similarities for this letter of support that could be pulled out of our CASA letter of support. So I guess what I'm looking for is, and I will open this to public comment, should anybody have any comments, but I'm just looking to see if I can get direction and work with the city manager to send a letter of support for this. And I know you probably, you know, if you're not on top of legislative stuff, you may have questions on what's SB 5, so we should have all gotten this, yes.
Just one thing real quick. The league has a template letter, so it would really just be sending the template letter. And it just, I think it's just more informational probably than anything else, as opposed to needing specific direction.
Okay. All right. That's, that's fine then. Yeah, I, I haven't seen the template letter. It might have been one of the things I haven't downloaded. And there's a new process, by the way, too, to submit letters. That's good, it's like an automated thing, and it goes to the authors of the bills as well as the actual committees. So that'll be the first time that we use that. So does anybody have any questions on that?
No, you, you indicated that your thought process, it would be similar to our support for the CASA letter?
There are some elements that are in our CASA letter that would be similar to what this letter of support, but I haven't seen the template letter. Was that one of the attachments? I missed that.
Yeah, so the, so SB 5 is a, it's an alternate way to try to fund affordable housing and related infrastructure than the SB 50 bill, which is the Weiner bill. That's the densification around transit. So that's the one, one of the elements of CASA that people, especially outside of the urban core of the Bay Area, don't like. And so this is an alternative that allows that, allows you to be away from that one-size-fits-all type approach that Weiner's bill's taking. So, so it's an, it's a much more palatable alternative, using ERAF money for it, which is one of the elements, as the mayor was saying, is in our letter.
Is our letter, yes. So there, although there were some elements of the CASA compact that we appreciated, overall, we did not appreciate the CASA compact. Am I not correct?
That was the gist of the letter, yes.
You might be being a little kind, but.
Absolutely. I will, I will open this up for public comment if anybody has any comments on, okay. Seeing no one, we'll let that go then. All right. Yes, please.
Just a quick suggestion. This reminds me, we do this numerous places. I wonder if it'd be worth taking a look at having a legislative plank. It basically lays out a strict set of conditions where, in a somewhat, I hate to use emergent situation, but say in a time-sensitive situation like this, in between meetings, they lay out what the mayor and vice mayor consultation, what the city manager might be able to reply in a letter of support or opposition to, and then report out fully for ratification at the next meeting. That's used at many places, and that gives you a more solid grounding to be able to do that.
I think we did that.
I'm trying to remember if we actually have that, because that's, that strikes me as that's, that's what we need.
I, I believe you do. And actually, when I first heard about this tonight with Damian, my immediate thought was, do we need to have you go through the process for a need for immediate action and the kind of double vote that you do? But then on reflection, I believe you do have a broad outline that enables the mayor on an emergency basis to write a letter if it fits in with the broad parameters of your legislative policy. And I think this would qualify. So I don't think that you actually need to, you know, take formal action or anything. I think you have that ability now.
This is a perfect time to say, I wonder if we could just have a copy of that put into our binders, too, as a reminder, because here I'm thinking of it, but I didn't remember. We've actually done this sometime in years past. So that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. And the basic process would be that if it's time-sensitive and you can't hear it before the council, before the next meeting, next scheduled meeting, then the mayor and the city manager, presuming that it's, we think it's consistent with the council's position on things, and especially if it's consistent with the league's support of something, that we could do that and then provide a copy of that letter to all the council members.
Okay. So we're good with this. Great. Thank you very much. And we are now at item 17, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman, your hand was higher than Mr. Beridge, so.
On future agenda items, I agree with Mr. Landman that we need to have Sonoma County Transit come. And I had, the last few days especially, been working with the SMART administration and the Sonoma County Transit. There, we have a great, it's, this is all an economic issue too, because Catati is very not well-served. Like, the Route 10 only goes, doesn't even, it, it doesn't go, it goes one way to the train station, doesn't go back to Catati. There's problems with half, if you're, you're in Riner Park, like on Adrian, you have twice as many buses as Catati has. So I had a pith, pithony at 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, and I redesigned the whole routes, and even one in front of my house, the west side of Catati. West, west side of Catati and West Sierra has no bus routes. So I'm hoping we all can come together on redesigning the local routes. They haven't been done in 10 years. So that would be, and I'm getting, I'm, I'm very impressed with SMART and, and also having transit, you know, have them all linked to the SMART station. Like, the buses don't link, they're, it could be, they like, a cross firm energy club is where people get off, and then they have to walk over to the train station for the SMART station. There's no connections right at the, at the SMART station. Anyway, the other one is disaster preparedness I wanted to talk about. Sebastopol, you had, which is close to our size, has had, you know, major damage, and we're not ready, they are not ready. I looked at their budget, and they don't have storage for, not storage, savings for infrastructure, all that kind of things. We don't have saving, we have savings to run you guys for the government part for three months, but you don't have monies to, to deal with damage if you're not reimbursed by a state agency or anything like that. So I think that needs to be addressed. And then there's we debatement. We've got it coming up. Those, all this rain's going to bring some weeds, and you guys need to do that. And for my mother, your lack of senior services, we need to be dealt with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Beridge? Oh, sorry.
Who is mystery man?
We will all find out soon. Mr. Beridge?
Briefly, I'd like to speak about the city council members' reports tonight. The council has taken council reports to kind of a new level tonight. Just want you to kind of be aware of that. So for a future agenda item, I would like you to seriously consider a discussion about why our police chief is not wearing a body camera during these meetings. We have the highest law enforcement officer in the town, probably the most highly-paid staff member of the town, not wearing a body camera in the event of an emergency or an issue in this room. It could have become in very handy in certain situations to avoid costly unwanted litigation. But I think it's high time that the police chief wear a body camera, so that if something happens, he can turn that on and record it to protect the city's interests, save us tax dollars, as taxpayers, over $100,000 in legal fees, as we saw in a case that I brought forth a few years ago. I think it would be highly invaluable and a, make, and it'd be a good chance for the chief to make a good impression on his fellow officers, that he is not above reproach, that he will also carry that responsibility of using a body camera when and where he thinks that's important to do so. They're relatively inexpensive, but I think it's the height of hypocrisy for him to sit here after what the city has gone through with that federal lawsuit against you, that he still sits here without a body camera on. Also, I'd like to see you put on a future agenda what you're going to do about the homeless situation here in Catati. Now, Mayor DeLoso has asked very nicely if this fellow city, city council members would be so kind as to maybe entertain the idea of putting this topic on a future agenda, to see where the city stands and what services they might want to offer the homeless in the very worst weather conditions that the city is, suffers under at times, and make it readily available, your decision, to the local press on where you stand on the homeless situation, which includes Sonoma State students and junior college students who are living out of their vehicles and showering and, and whatever they need to do as best they can, because they are homeless as well, and they're not often counted. So as we, as we go forward, I think it's high time, as we've seen for many years, this issue being kicked down the road, that this year, we're going to take a look at this and have an honest and open discussion about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this point? All right. Seeing no one, we will move on to item 18, any information received after the agenda was posted? We have none. And we're at item 19, which is an announcement of closed session. So under California Government Code, Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment, City Attorney. And we will adjourn into closed session and report out. And we will adjourn into closed session and report out afterwards. Thank you very much.